I'd like to welcome everyone to the Amory Board of Education meeting. We're in an open session again, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next will be our consent agenda items.
I had the vouchers this month. Everything looked in order. There was a correction for a name of one check, and I made note of that, and that should be corrected, and other than that, everything is good, so I'll make a motion to approve those.
All right, any second.
Second.
Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Next, we'll have community comments, and I'll read our guidelines for community comments. Welcome to this meeting of the School District of Amory Board of Education. We are pleased that you are interested in the work of the school board. You may address the board only during community comments time on the board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda items. The following guidelines have been established for addressing Amory Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign-up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign-up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding board member. Political speeches which are not materially related to the board decisions, policies adopted by the board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the school district are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized, and after being recognized, state your name and the municipality where you live for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or a response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you with a response. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future board meeting. With that, we have one individual, Donna Martenson.
As you said, my name is Donna Martenson. I live in Garfield Township, so on the far edge of the Amory School District. And before moving out here, I spent, let's see, 14 years working in youth ministry and 18 as a United Methodist pastor, teaching confirmation, taking kids to camp, that kind of thing. I've noticed that the human development and growth and development curriculum is on the agenda, and I'd like to speak to that. In the teaching of human growth and development, the content to help young people understand the human body has an added burden of conveying a particular point of view. Can we imagine teaching cooking and saying that, "Cooking with meat is wrong because animals have to die so we can have meat, so we'll just have grains, beans, fruits, vegetables, nuts, and dairy." Or it's Wisconsin, "All cooking should be cheese and milk, and cheese and milk alone." That's adding a value to an academic content. We also address risky activities, whether at home or in school, and we don't keep them away from kids. We provide tools and guidance for hunting, for driving, and power tools in shop class. There's really no way that our schools can be values-neutral, but I think we need to be clear about what values we are addressing. And I think our academic programs need to focus on factual teaching as the first priority. We can add values like environmental sustainability, racial justice, fairness, honesty, personal and community responsibility through the whole school culture, in addition to what families, communities, community groups, and faith groups might offer. When it comes to teaching human growth and development, emphasizing abstinence is a value statement and not an academic or scholarly focus. By raising my concern, I am not saying that abstinence is wrong or should not be discussed, just that it is only part of the picture. In 2017, there was an article published by the School of Public Health at Columbia University. They pointed out many important things, I think, that are relevant, that I hope the board will consider going into the future. The weight of scientific evidence shows that programs that emphasize abstinence do not help young people delay initiation of sexual intercourse. That's John Santelli, an author and a professor at the school. While abstinence is theoretically effective, he continues, "In actual practice, intentions to abstain from sexual activity often fail. These programs simply do not prepare young people to avoid unwanted pregnancies or sexually transmitted diseases." What we really want is for our young people to have the skills, knowledge, tools, kind of emotional well-being to approach all of life. We have also seen in the U.S. that the rapidly rising age of first marriage has translated to shrinking numbers of people, young people who abstain from sex before getting married. In the U.S. today, the gap between the age at first sex, first relationship, and first marriage is 8.7 years for young women and 11.7 years for young men, and puberty is earlier as well. So when you have that gap, how do we really help young people understand and work through that and do that in a healthy way? An emphasis on abstinence would naturally exclude addressing birth control. By 2013, it was observed that inclusion of birth control in school education curriculums had dropped to just above half, and it may have dropped even further by now. So in terms of effectiveness, by contrast, comprehensive sex education programs have favorable effects on adolescent behaviors, including sexual initiation, meaning less likely to do that. I mean, if you understand something, maybe you don't need to just test it out. It has a reduction in number of sex partners, a reduction in frequency of sexual activity, greater use of condoms and contraception, reduced frequency of unprotected sexual activity, which would also mean a reduced incidence of STIs and a reduced incidence of pregnancy. Another one of the professors there said, "Abstinence-only until marriage programs leave all young people unprepared and are particularly harmful to young people who are sexually active, who are LGBTQ, or have experienced sexual abuse." Oftentimes, programs that are abstinence-focused are very traditional in their pictures of family, and so then kids would be excluded. And I know that there is bullying here in this district for students who are queer, having talked to somebody who works with kids now. And finally, abstinence-only programs are widely rejected by health professionals who care for young people, including the Society for Adolescent Health and Medicine. Because we want to really take care of the kids, and we understand the power and the drives of emotions and sexuality, don't we want to help them have really good conversations? And isn't the school in a great place to get parents to actually learn how to have those conversations as well, instead of just hiding and keeping it hush-hush? Because we know, if there's a lack of info, where do you go? The Internet? What do you find? Porn? What do you find? Bad information? What, you know? I mean, and really, what it says is it doesn't work. And when I looked at the slides and the outline, I saw a lot of emphasis on abstinence, and I think, you know, it's really time to kind of take another step and think about that in terms of, this is a school class. How do we help kids understand their bodies and understand? Now there's a whole diversity of understanding of gender, of sexual attraction, and we, and as I know, by talking about it, it actually helps kids feel better, not be pushed into experimentation, know that they have got somebody they can talk to. And isn't that what we want? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll go on now with our administrative reports. Here, Josh.
All right, appreciate the sweet from the high school tonight. Halloween, we had a really fun dress-up contest for student and staff. Mr. Fern and I went as Gilligan and Skipper, and not a single kid had a clue who we were. We went back to my assistant principal, didn't know who he was either. I'm almost as old as Mr. Benson.
But it was pretty awesome. I have to say, it was pretty good.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
It was good.
We had the school play, Little Women. Kids did a fabulous job, as they always do. It's such talented, a lot of talent at the school. Had a wonderful Veterans Day program last week. Special thank you to Dan Choney for making it back and being our speaker. Had some wonderful fall band concerts, and we've got a couple coming up here in December as well. We did our practice ACT assessments, ninth through 11th grade on Thursday. You know, it's always a mixed bag. Kids are like, "Oh, we hate taking these." I know you do, but we need to do this. We get a lot of valuable data for the students. We also were able to analyze the questions that they get wrong, so we can look at our own curriculum to see, you know, what questions kids are missing. Some of the tests we do in-house, some of it we send off to ACT, and so it'll take a couple weeks till we get those results back. And then the second half of the day, we decided to do a reward day this year, have a little fun. Kids and teachers had some, intermixing a lot of different things going on, and it was a much-needed reward day after a long morning of testing. Upcoming events, after Thanksgiving break, we've got National Honor Society induction ceremony. We've got honors choir coming up December 5th, and then the week of December 12th, we have both the high school choir and jazz band concerts, but also the middle school has the same thing going on that week as well. So we'll have a number of concerts at the high school. Good. Thank you.
All right, at the middle school, we are kicking off a food drive, and we do it every year in December. We think we kick it off on November 28th this year, so we're excited to get that started. And middle school, middle school boys' basketball is really, really busy, and we were having a really good season so far. We're really proud of the kids and the development. And girls' basketball and wrestling will be starting very soon. Josh had mentioned the band and choir concerts. We just had our fall band concert on November 15th, and it was really fun to see both the high school and the middle school band perform. And then we have our middle school jazz band, sixth grade band, and our choirs perform the Christmas concert on December 15th. We have a theater field trip coming up for sixth grade, and I believe December 2nd, they're going to be going to the Minneapolis Children's Theater to see How the Grinch Stole Christmas. And in January, we did have, The Diary of Anne Frank was a play that the seventh and eighth grade were going, and we found out just last week that they had to cancel that play because of lack of ticket sales, and so now we're back to the drawing board on where we're going to go with that. So that kind of threw us for a loop. We're really busy with some PDH, which is like a professional development opportunity for teachers on further trauma-sensitive practices, and Kate Weisenbeck has come forward with some programs that will help teachers do some self-paced professional development on how to handle students that have come from a trauma background and how to help support them in all areas. Next slide, I mentioned the food drive, this theater trip, essentials, pretty much that we've covered most of that in my first part, so I'll go to the last slide. And, let's see, the last day of our trimester is coming up on November 30th. Let's skip that. We have a data meeting coming up, and we're really excited again to sit down and really take a look at our data. We take a look not only at our achievement data and where kids are having success in areas where kids could improve, but we also take a look at our attendance, and we take a look at behavioral concerns, time of day those things happen, locations, and just try to strategy, you know, look at all the strategies. What can we do to support kids across the board in all areas? And finally, on December 16th, we have a student warrior way celebration. The concert that we do on the 15th, we replicate it because a lot of our kids can't go, so then we do a second, shorter concert on the 16th for our students, and then we'll have a little warrior way kickoff to celebrate the holiday season, so.
And the intermediate school is invited to that December 16th concert, so it's a good opportunity for our up-and-coming intermediate students to see what band all entails, gets them excited. At the intermediate school, at the end of last month, we had our Halloween carnival. It was very well-attended, so thank you to Erin and the IPO for putting that on. It is a lot of work. Kids are really excited about it, and it's a wonderful fundraiser for us. Our grades three through five students were invited over to the high school to preview Little Women. They really, really enjoyed it, so thank you to Josh and the high school students for putting on such a wonderful event and inviting our students over. Our district has received a literacy grant through the state of Wisconsin, and so that literacy grant is called Motion 57, and with those funds, we have to use those funds very specifically to really address the reading gaps that we have and address the foundational skills. So Paul and I have done a lot of work navigating which one of those tools is going to be best for us, so we are moving forward with a program called Top Ten Tools. It is an online program. It's very comprehensive, and we have 13 educators that will be completing it. So for the most part, it'll be elementary and intermediate staff, but then we do have a middle school staff member and a high school staff member that will also participate to help us meet the needs of some of our struggling learners. Our November 7th in-service, we had another coaching session with HMH. We had prepared questions just on navigating some of the online resources, and then the rest of that day was focusing on data. So we really dived into the forward assessments, the different strands, and we are working on some goal-setting with our students, individual goals and classroom goals, too. The intermediate school trauma-sensitive schools committee is completing a three-part series through CISA. They are one-hour virtual sessions where CISA 11 is walking us through just how do we respond to students who have gone through trauma? How do we recognize it? How do we continue to support them? So by the end of November, we are proud to say that we will be able to add eight staff members to our TSS-trained school here at intermediate. And then finally, our AIM trout program. Our AIM students traveled to the St. Croix Falls hatchery and collected their trout eggs. They are here safely. They are growing in our fish, in our fish tank, and we're excited to watch them. So there was a lot of teaching done on the expectations of growing trout, so they were very excited to participate in that. And then we have our upcoming events. So tomorrow, we have an all-school PBIS swimming celebration at the center, and then end of trimester, as Mr. Benson said, we are not forgetting the December 3 community event. December 7th, we have our AIM showcase here at the intermediate school. And then finally, on December 8th, we have our third-grade concert at the high school at 6:30 PM.
Thank you.
So the elementary school, we had a great time in Halloween with our Halloween parade, and it was wonderful weather, so we were able to hold that event outside, which was really nice to be able to do in the end of October. Our in-service, we did a lot of HMH resource training as well, question and answer, as Jessica already shared. We also took some time to meet together about a fast bridge assessment program that we use, talked and got some resources from our Title I services. Then we talked a little bit through our TAP plans or our teacher assistance programs for students that need some accommodations in some of their work. And yeah, they just had a really good time in the afternoon doing some instructional mapping with our HMH, so that was really nice to be able to do. Some of the activities that we've been having going on at our school is, the students have been working on their wire way, which means that they are being respectful, responsible, and safe, so they earn some high fives from me during the school day as I catch them doing the wire way. And we put those all into a basket, and every month I do a little drawing for something for them. So 15 kids were drawn out this month, and I went into the cafeteria and had lunch with them, and we really enjoyed that. It was a really great time to sit and get to know students a little bit better. Our second-grade kindness club, they did a drive in October called Socktober Sock Drive, and they collected socks to be donated out to community organizations, and they collected 466 pairs of socks. So that was a great accomplishment for them.
Did they all match?
What do you do when you start?
I don't know.
Our art students with Mrs. Anderson created a mural in our, in our school of thank you veterans, and they created a whole bunch of poppies with their artwork, and it turned out really nice, so that was fun to watch and see. The Knights of Columbus organized a coke drive in our building, and they supplied nearly 300 winter clothing items to about 100 youth. So thank you to the Knights of Columbus for doing that and making those community connections. We also held a fundraiser in our building. It's our Cherrydale fundraiser. Students did some selling, and we came up with $6,513.16 of fundraising sales, along with $530.50 in just donations. So that's a huge thank you to our students and families and the community for supporting our school. It works out so nicely for us. And then we have a referendum which we just continue to work and update, and we just keep moving forward. So it's an exciting time for us to start moving towards what that vision is, is it's going to be for us. Upcoming events, we have Turkey Bingo. Those of you that have been in, in the elementary school before or have heard about it, but tomorrow we get to do the turkey dance and play some Turkey Bingo, so we're looking forward to that. Our kindness club will deliver some thank you bags out to the community. We have our PBIS celebration, our holiday fun nights coming up on December 1st, and then we have our Cherrydale fundraiser pickup coming up on December 5th, so you can follow those items you ordered. So, thank you.
All right, for people's services this month, this is the kind of, the time of the year where we review Indicator 14. If you don't have those memorized, Indicator 14 measures exiting seniors with disabilities, so last year's seniors who had graduated or otherwise moved on. And case managers call them up over the summer and into the beginning of the fall here and basically ask them, "What are you doing, right? Are you employed? Are you looking for work? Are you in college?" And so this year, we had, out of those 18 exiting seniors, we had 11 respondents that indicated they were either competitively employed or engaged in higher education or other training. So based on the qualifying responses, there's a financial piece to this, there's a transition incentive grant fund out there. It changes a little bit the exact payout year to year, but this year it's $955.41 per student. So based on those percentages of respondents engaged in post-secondary education, competitive employment, we were able to retrieve $10,509.51. But what's more important is really to gauge, right, the value of these kids coming out of school with, you know, a good education, a direction from their case managers, teachers, administrators of, "Hey, what are you going to do when this gets real, and how are you going to contribute to society?" So, you know, we're happy to see this year, at least, that, you know, we're above state average in almost all the categories, especially those higher ed and higher ed and competitive employment. So that's good news and exciting to see. So we're continuing, why do we have that? Why do we see those results? Well, we're hoping it's from kind of the next point, which is employability skills and courses that we have for our kids with disabilities at the high school level. Chuck Mulloman's really integral in that, as are really all our special ed team. They do a lot of alternating services with staff and students. They do car detailing, cooking, a lot of fundraising with that, lamp construction, and they practice vocational skills, working with the team, you know, being customer service-oriented, all those sorts of things. So employability class now is a prerequisite for participation in our new grant, in the transition readiness grant, and that's set to continue through the second semester. So to just continue along that train of thought, we have identified, as we'd said before, a number of students, about five students. We have one who's already started as a worker in student nutrition with the support of John McBride, so he's already working in on hours, helping out, getting trained in there. And we've got other students that are slated for employment and work experiences starting in December and January. So we're excited to, you know, just continue that. And then finally, we completed some, we talked about skill streaming training, which is this evidence-based social skills curriculum. We talked about that in the beginning of the summer. We brought in some teachers at the elementary level to get trained in that prior to school start. And on November 7th, we had our intermediate and middle special education teachers and counselor trained on skill streaming. So at this point, we've got pre-K through eight trained in that social skills curriculum, and we've got a lot of great counselors kind of leading the charge along with our special ed teachers to implement, right? It's one thing having a tool, and then it's another to, you know, find out when to use that tool and make sure that it's something that you're practicing with. So that's the next step for that. Otherwise, yeah, just staying busy, and it's been, yeah, it's been a great start to the fall and heading into the winter. I think everyone's going to enjoy this, these few days off coming up. Everyone's been really busy.
Well, I just want to give a, you know, a Mrs. Johnson, like, high five out to John McBride, because as a, like, the head of our food service, you just don't think, like, the head of your food service is so involved in your school. But one, I can't think of a better guy to take somebody under his wing and, like, really make this work and partner with somebody. And two, he's been in several meetings with other aspects of what we've got going on here in the district, and he is just all in in the district. So, I mean, like, you know, big, top for Mr. McBride and a warrior way, because that guy just embraces this district, like, you know, but I have not seen somebody in that kind of position that you wouldn't think, you know, feels like they're in all-encompassing role, so I, that, it just should be mentioned, so. And then I did have a question, that you said that 11 out of 18 of last year's graduates responded that they were gainfully employed. Did that mean, I didn't know if there was a period there, a comma, was there 11 out of 18 that responded, or 18 that responded and 11 were gainfully employed or into higher education?
Right. The last thing you just said, yes, that 11 out of 18 were either competitively employed or in higher education or other training.
Okay, but all 18, like, responded?
Um, no. 11 out of 18. And then we had, I would have to look to the data to see.
So like, the other seven, we didn't hear anything from?
Um, I can get back to you, but I think, I mean, I think it was maybe, I'll have to look at the data.
Okay.
But 11 out of 18 were actively employed or engaged in other training.
Okay.
And we had a few that we weren't able to reach.
Okay, that's the case every year. If they didn't respond, but they are maybe gainfully employed, they just didn't respond to us.
Right.
Okay, that's just, that was my clarification.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you. I don't know what you guys do with all your free time. Wonderful.
Hobbies.
Next, we'll go to informational items. Unless you had something.
Nope, I do not.
All right.
Keith?
Yeah?
Sean, did you just want to speak up for what you asked or what we talked about on Friday in regards to Fritz's and what you're working on for?
Yes, we are in a period in regards to vouchers. That was the conversation over the course of the last two months. We are in a period of transition in the district office. We have just hired a business manager who is set to arrive and begin work here on December 1st. So Twyla has been pulled on double duty, being the director of personnel and the business manager at the same time, which is no small undertaking. So first order of business, once our new business manager, director of finances, her actual title gets her feet underneath her, is for her and Twyla and Becky to begin the process of relabeling what those titles are for vouchers. It was actually on the radar prior to it even being brought up here in a board meeting. So the point is taken. It is recognized that it is an issue, and it's going to be addressed over the course of the next couple weeks and will likely be remedied before we get to the December board meeting.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we'll go to the informational items.
Okay. I have a brief referendum after the Thanksgiving break, set to begin the process of work for referendum, and then after putting it out to bid, see who is the bidder of selection, and then entering into contracts. Please remember, all of the bid work, that entire process, is done by a third party, and that third party is Kraus Anderson. The district doesn't receive bids, the district doesn't open bids. That all happens independent of us. We see it when the deadline has arrived, just like Kraus Anderson and LHB see it. And then at that point, we have an idea what the price of said work will be. Troy Miller from LHB will be here at the December board meeting to start talking to you about what actual real numbers that have been bid out for work came in as. So we'll know that by the end of December, a lot more than we do right now. We have about two or three weeks of bid work in order to happen, in order to know what the numbers are actually going to be. And then the first week of January, Kraus Anderson gives what the, what is known as to the district as a price guarantee, and it shall be no more dollars than the price guarantee. And that happens at the beginning of January. And then the timeline is, March, we get to work, and we'll be working until the end of 2024. It's a very exciting time. Questions for me on that brief summary? Questions for me on that brief summary of information?
Big challenge.
Big challenge. Lots to figure out.
All right.
That leads right into the next presentation item. District Operations and Maintenance Long-Term Plan. Some folks have construed that referendum in the School District of Amory as sort of this arbitrary thing, where it's built up, it's a point of no return, boom, we need to get something done, we need to do something about it. That's really not what's happened in the district, at least in the time that I've been in the district. Typically, work has been preceded by what's called a feasibility study. These are the items of the day that need to be fixed, and here's how we're going to do it. And referendum, in some cases, is how it's been done. What you'll see here on the screen is a history of referendum going back to 1997. The School District of Amory has not gone to referendum very often. You may think so based on the number of times you see referendum on the screen. Some of our neighbors have gone three, four, or five times in the course of five or six years. We haven't been to referendum in approximately 10 years. And what you see on the list here, actually longer than 10 years, 15 years, and five years and then 15 years all the way back to 2007 is what I meant to say. And there's nothing on the list after 2022 that is earmarked to be referendum. So let's take a walk through this quickly, just so everyone remembers what's occurred here. In 1997, we went to referendum, that's the actual amount, just shy of 8 million. Some of the features of the high school that are used quite often were a part of this referendum. The library, the science rooms, and the auditorium were an offshoot of the 1997 referendum. In 2001, for, it's shocking to see this number, for just shy of 13 million, we built the intermediate school. A new intermediate school is likely to be 30 or 40 million dollars now. 2007, we went to referendum for $2 million, and I actually spoke with George today, because in those days, I was at the high school, George was in his present position then, and here's what 2007 was about. New boilers at the high school, new boilers at the middle school, hot water heater at the high school and hot water heater at the middle school. And then we replaced the DDC, which is the direct digital controls at the elementary and high school. That's the software and computer system that operate heating and cooling. And that's 15 years old. In the world of technology, 15 years is going to be a dinosaur. So we had to address that. So that's what happened in 2007. 2017, it's a recurring referendum, which means it's an each-year thing, 1.9. We went to referendum to improve the amount of money in technology, curriculum, building in grounds, and instructional technology. There are four pieces of the pie. You've seen that presentation here many times. In 2022, pretty fresh on everyone's minds, high school, elementary school, and then clubhouse, childcare. Those are the items being addressed here over the course of the next 18 months. Now, when you went through the survey, when you looked at the results of the survey, what you might not have spent a tremendous amount of time on were the comments. And the comments were very interesting in the area of the third question. Remember, the first question was about high school, second question was about elementary and clubhouse, the third question was about a pool slash clubhouse, or just a pool. And a lot of the comments in there, people said, I will not support a pool or a clubhouse until we address the athletic facilities first. And in conversation with folks that live and attend events and have kids in events here in Amory, there's a lot of conversation about our athletic facilities. Some folks, maybe some folks in the room, travel to other places, and they see what other districts are doing in regards to their athletic facilities. We are falling behind as a district in the area of athletics. And if you wanted to talk about participation, as in the amount of kids that are touched by particular things, there are a lot of kids that are in athletics from the time they enter school to the time they leave. I want everyone to know right here and now, I am not suggesting we go to referendum to address our athletic facilities. That is not what this proposal is. That is not what this conversation is. What I am interested in doing is engaging with our coaching community and our parents of kids and athletics community about what the needs of the athletic facilities are. And there is a group of folks, if you go to the next two pages, you'll see a list of folks. Jeff Fern and Josh Gould helped me assemble the list. There are 35 people that we would like to invite to a meeting on January 4th and to get their feedback. Get their feedback on facilities, as in the playing surfaces, whether they be fields or courts, scoreboards, fence lines, construction stands, press boxes, et cetera, and all things in between, just to get their feedback, because every one of these folks is going to come at it from a different perspective. And at that point, we'll see what they feel, and then we'll have an idea of what our facility needs are, and then we can perhaps game plan to address that issue, the athletics issue. If you go back two slides ago, Becky, after that athletic facility upgrade potentially, if we have your blessing to move forward here this evening, then we would do another feasibility study, which is exactly what we did before 2017's referendum and exactly what we did before 2007's referendum, exactly what we did before 2001, and exactly what we did before 1997. And if the truth be told, Kraus Anderson did the feasibility study in 2001, in '07, in '17, and in '22. So they've been working with us for the better part of 25 years. So we would go back to the drawing board and see what our facility needs are at that point, and we'll see what the new number ones are, because we're about to check off a whole bunch of number ones. But by the time we get to that, some of the twos will have become ones. And then we'll see where we stand, and then we'll make a plan for the future. There could be a referendum at that point, but not anytime soon. So what I need your permission to be able to do and your feedback on is to engage with the athletic community and to have a conversation with them, which is scheduled to be January 4th. No one's been invited, and if this is something you want me to do, all of you certainly can come and hear what the feedback is. So I'll open up to you for questions or comments.
Well, planning is progressive, and the need is going to be there, so the more information we have, the better off we're going to be able to make decisions. So I, I don't think we need a motion to make you.
Nope. I'm just interested, I wanted to make sure you were aware before we invited people into the room to talk about something that will have a financial impact. By the way, you can't do it for free by any means.
Yeah. I think as a responsible board, this is awful hard to kind of choke down after we've just asked the community for as much money as we've asked for.
Mm-hmm.
And, and passed and was granted to us. On the flip side of that, there were comments that I heard that, you know, that were a general consensus of how did the district, after the video was put out by the committee, a very well-done video to show the needs of the building, is how did our facility get that way in the first place, which, which we've addressed to the community of why that happened? I guess things like that do happen when you kick the can down the road, and if we don't at least look at this and what input is in a kind of feasibility study, in five years, we'll be sitting here answering the same question as how did this get kicked down the road? I would hope that going into this meeting, we would know that not everything is going to be able to be done all at one time, and that, like you said, there are priorities.
Right. That would be said very early on.
Um, but again, it doesn't hurt to start the conversation, but as a board member sitting here, I'm, you know, not open to asking for any more money at this point.
I agree. I agree. Please know that through, we would not be addressing athletics through referendum. That's not the proposal. That's not what's going to happen if I have anything to say about it, and I think I would have a lot to say. That's not what's going to happen. There are other funding mechanisms already built into our budget where you can address facilities.
And I think, I think that was kind of my point, is that not necessarily going to referendum, but we had to go to referendum to address some of these other things, not this big referendum, obviously, because that just, those are concerns that can't be addressed through the budget. But the 1.9 million recurring referendum that we did ask for in 2017 that we have, and that we do have facility money for, we need to keep in mind that that, that money, those are potentially things that could be funded through that source and things like that, and I think that's just warranted to kind of put that out there as we're going to move forward with this discussion.
Sure. I'd like to disagree with you there. I think the 2017 referendum, the reoccurring referendum, was not intended at all to be utilized for this by taxpayers. And is this something that's going to help enrollment?
I would imagine if you don't address your athletic facilities, you're probably going to lose some. If you do address your athletic facilities, you might gain some, but I don't think it's going to be a game changer. I think it is a matter of addressing the athletic facilities so that the kids that are already here have the best possible experience.
And I've, I mean, I've already told and been vocal about this, is we are attempting to deal with 43 and a half million dollars. That is going to be extremely challenging over the next couple of years. And after that is used, we're going to have to prioritize our needs again, because there will be things that we need at that point in time that we don't have. And again, I all, I mean, I think all of us like to keep up with the Joneses. But it's, this is a very difficult thing. Again, you hit it on the head, is we just took a referendum for 43 and a half million dollars, and it's very difficult to me to talk about an athletic facility upgrade. I just think the conversations, even in planning, are just going to be having, having a, a meeting to have a meeting. We can all put together our wish lists, but we're not going to get them.
Well, I'm not sure, so sure that that's accurate, because the funding mechanism that exists in the budget can address many of these facilities, and it wouldn't cost our taxpayers a dime.
Where, what is the money coming from?
It's called Fund 38. It's debt service, and I can make a presentation to you on debt service, Fund 38, if you'd like me to, prior to or after that meeting. To get into it now, I would rather wait and have a formal presentation so you see exactly what it looks like. I have all the information, just not in a presentation form, but I'd be happy to do that.
I don't think it costs us anything to sit down with all these people and to just talk about it.
No, that's not the cost. To address facilities is certainly going to cost money, but there is a mechanism by which to do it. We have a lot of debt that's already fallen off in this district, and that debt, when it falls off, can either just fall off, or you can continue to have the exact same number in debt service for the next 20 years, and that's how you address your facilities, and that's what Fund 38 is. But I can certainly make a presentation to all of you if that's what you'd like me to do.
I, well, I don't have a clue what Fund 38 is.
Well, I, I wouldn't hold it against you if it didn't. More smokes don't.
The, the other thing about this too is, kind of like the, kind of like our Human Growth and Development Committee, I wonder if by just putting all of our athletic peoples in, you know, many are all, well, the extreme majority are members who work for the school district.
Well, most of our coaches are employees here.
Yeah. So would it, would it behoove us to actually have people from the community who are going to be paying for this who don't have children in sports?
The hope is to get feedback from those who work on the facilities and in the actual places where these sports take place, to get their feedback, because they know it best. I'm not looking for feedback how to afford it or whether we should afford it. I'm just looking for feedback from them. What are the issues? You asked Jeremiah Fisk. Jeremiah, I asked him this on, what day was I in this classroom? I was there on Thursday of last week and Friday. Said, how many home runs have been hit at our facility in the time you've been here? Said, we've had two home runs. Said, why is that? He says, because our fences are further than any field in the entire area. They're like major league fences, they need to be moved in. So where do you sit when you come to your ballgames? Said, we don't have bleachers, you better bring a chair. There aren't any bleachers. So to address bleachers and fences, that's not millions of dollars. But if you're talking about how much does it cost to do a athletic turf facility like they do for football in Baldwin or Richmond or Ellsworth, Josh officiates, he sees lots of turf fields. That's not nickels and dimes, that's 500 to 750,000 dollars. That's a bigger ticket. So everything would just be on the table, and then we would know what our facility needs are. And at that point, it would be up to this group with my help to make a plan to how to address those, if we do at all. Perhaps you make the decision, yeah, we're just not going to do that. That's what you're here for.
Yeah, I think we can't really talk about it as a board until we have the information in front of us, and this meeting would just get that started. And like, I, I mean, the person that I'd heard that comes to mind, although I've heard this many times, but one of the people that came to mind about the facilities is, he's a taxpayer in this district, and he doesn't have, he graduated from this district, he has no kids in the district, he has no kids at all, and was just wondering, like, how, how did it get that bad? Well, it kind of gets that bad because you can't even talk about it, you can't even address it, when all your money is going somewhere else or you're having funding that's caught, and you're just trying to keep teachers and staff. So you're kicking the can down the road, and if we choose to not talk about it at all, I think we just kick the can down the road. That's kind of irresponsible as a board member, too. So I see that we have to weigh our responsibilities as a board member. You can't turn a blind eye to it, but you're not necessarily agreeing that, hey, let's just build the Taj Mahal either. So those are the decisions that we have to make, but we can't make those decisions unless we're educated. So I think that's what this meeting is really just setting.
Just trying to get feedback, and I agree with you, Joe, I'm not interested in asking our taxpayers one dime more than we're asking with 43.5 million dollars. That would be irresponsible. But what I would like to do is to continue to address the needs of this district, but in order to do that, we've got to figure out what they are first. I couldn't tell you what the needs of the football field are, but I bet the football coaches could. I couldn't tell you how rotten the scoreboards are at soccer, but I bet they could. I do know this, when I go to soccer, I'm not sure if it's a one, a three, a five, or an eight. I don't know what the scoreboard says. So, because the lights are burned out. I, I don't know how bad the gym floor is in the high school, while the basketball coaches did. They've been saying something about this since Josh was athletic director, and we finally addressed it. There are a lot of things that they would know best. That's the reason they're in the room. I don't want to discount the voices of the other folks that live in this community, not for a second, but they really wouldn't know what the needs are.
I thought the initial intent here was just to gather information.
Yeah, gather info.
Which certainly seems like a good thing to do. It's not, you know, this is five years down the road, maybe more, maybe.
Could be.
You know, three, five.
It, it, it could be as soon as the summer of '24 if we wanted it to be.
Yeah. I mean, depending on what it is, and I mean, we're not, you know, if it's a thousand-dollar set of bleachers, I think we could fit that in.
So how about this, we'll, if okay with you, we'll have that meeting on the 4th, and then at that point in time, we'll have a handle on what the needs are. Kraus Anderson and LHB are still here, they're going to be here for a while. They would tell us what things would cost, and at that point, I can make a presentation to you in January on what Fund 38 allows us to be able to do. And this is information provided to me by Lisa Voison from Baird, she's done it many times, and it's been used by many districts to do it this way.
There are some things that we have covered, like the tennis courts.
Sure.
That was part, you know, we, we added tennis courts.
It's a safety issue.
1.9 million referendum dollars.
We have a new basketball floor or a new gym floor at the high school.
Yeah, right, like, we can address certain things slowly, but to prioritize those needs.
Because those, that, there, I mean, there is that, that piece of the pie sits there for that, is it 750,000 dollars to work on building a ground for a year?
Seven, 700.
700, so, I guess, yeah, it depends on what your.
What the biggest need is and what you can address.
What the biggest need is and what you can afford with 700,000.
Right.
But, you know, there's, if we need new scoreboards and things, you know, we don't necessarily even have to do those as part of money that's coming out of our budget somewhere. I mean, you just heard Paula talk about 6,000 dollars. I mean, we, there are people in town that would.
And if the truth be told, most districts do scoreboards through sponsorship and other mechanisms.
That's the word I was looking for.
And Josh and Jeff and I have been talking about this for years. There's ways to do that, that it's not going to be any money out of the district.
If I just would have won the lottery last month, this wouldn't be an issue.
Oh, sucks.
I tried.
I won. Four bucks.
Josh Gould. The stadium, yeah.
I mashed the portable, four dollars to start.
How many tickets did you buy? Not enough.
I could have bought a scoreboard, I'd be all the tickets.
So January 4th, at what time?
I think it was kind of for six. I don't have it in front of me, but I can invite all of you as well, and I would encourage you to show up, to hear what folks have to say.
Is that something that, I mean, I feel like this is a lot of people to hear from in a meeting. I mean, is it something that they can submit in writing?
Yeah. We're going to try and figure out a way to do that. Not everyone's chatty person in front of.
We can't listen to all, yeah, we can't listen to all their needs and.
And some will truly have nothing to say.
Right.
I mean, they're just, they just don't have any needs. I don't, I don't know who those people will be, but some just won't.
There's a big difference between needs and wants.
Yeah, that's right.
And I, I just wanna make sure that the people coming into this don't just, this isn't the time to complain about everything that's wrong with your facilities. You know, I, we're certainly open to hear, you know, what they have to say, but as long as, we don't have a pot of gold here, so hopefully they're respectful of that.
Sounds good.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we'll go with our weather cancellations.
Well, it's that time of year. We've gotten some snow. A little bit on weather cancellation, so everyone's up to speed with what's happening. Uh, the big factors, we entertain when we're making the decision whether to cancel due to weather. Uh, simply put, can we safely get to school? Is it safe for our buses, our student drivers and our parents? And then the other one that sometimes people forget, can we get home? Because sometimes it may be fine at seven or eight, but this afternoon it's not gonna be so good and we're gonna get stuck here. And what I always think of is my years at the high school, I've been a part of student fatalities and I'm not interested in sending kids off who are inexperienced drivers who may not be exercising the greatest amount of care into inclement weather and unsafe roads and having more fatalities. It's not anything I'd like to be a part of. So we're gonna err on the side of caution. Do we have to make up the days? That's always the question. Well, we have built three school days into our instructional minutes. Uh, after, we do not need to make up any of those three days. After that, we will, we have the occasion. It may be the only good thing that's ever come out of COVID is the ability to do remote learning. Uh, we are able to go ahead and do remote. We've got technology to do it. We've got teachers who are capable of it and kids that are somewhat familiar with it. So I would rather do that than go trekking on into the month of, of June for school. We can do it, so let's do it.
We've also added time to days.
Yes, there is, if we need to. Uh, timeline, if possible, the decision is gonna be made the night before. If we have a Buffalo event, and the actual number, I still can't even get my mind around this, is Orchard Park, where the Buffalo Bills play, had seventy-seven inches of snow. I tried to help my kids understand. I said, that's seven inches more, six inches taller than your dad. And they're like, that's not even possible. It is, actually. It is. So if that's gonna happen, we're gonna call it off for the whole week. We're not coming. But typically, that's not the case. The decision, our hope is to always have it made by six fifteen so people can plan for childcare and work. They need to do that. And we also need to call off the dogs in regards to getting our bus drivers in, because they get here at around six thirty. Uh, district office will work with the Director of Transportation, district administrators. No one wants to be the only district that closed. No one wants to be the only district that stayed open. So we tend to move together and then other members of the district team. So that'll, people will all be part of the conversation. School cancellation notification, we're gonna text it to you, we're gonna email it to you, and we're gonna call you. It's gonna be primary contacts. The reason we don't go with secondary contacts, someone's got a grandma that lives in Winona. They don't need to get the call. Just the primary people do. And if you really wanna be like having fun like we did when we were kids, watch TV. It'll be on the screen. Josh told us he'd go back and forth between the networks to see which one's moving quicker, which one's in the right part of the alphabet. Tom was just sleeping. He didn't care.
Well, we listened to CCO at Boone and Erickson. That's how I heard about it. Why would they put it on TV even?
We'll put it on social media and we'll put it on the website. I, I don't know how you would not know, but we've had people come to work and where is everybody?
I used to wake the kids up just for fun, even though I knew school was already closed.
I'm sure they love you.
Go watch it on the TV. Tell me if they're closed. That was fun.
I'm sure. Uh, conversation about extracurricular activities quickly. Uh, district administration will work with Athletic Director Jeff Fern to determine if we're having practices and games. If it's a tournament game, the WIA is gonna weigh in. Oftentimes, they're gonna say, we need you to get that game in. We need you to play. Because your opponent on the other end is waiting for you. So they get a little heavy-handed in that regard, but they got a schedule to keep. Uh, typically, if practices and games occur on the day of school cancellation, they'll also be canceled. Because we just couldn't get to school, you probably can't get to practice either. But sometimes it doesn't look like that. So we'll have that conversation. Questions for me?
I did have somebody say to me, man, I wish we got three feet of snow. Then we wouldn't have to talk about the Halloween storm anymore.
That's, that's still epic. I haven't forgotten. I thought twenty-five was a lot. Seventy-seven, that's insane.
That's impressive. That's impressive.
Twenty-five and twenty-four hours has a lot of snow.
All right. Well, with that, we will go on to our Human Growth and Development.
Okay. I'm gonna be assisted here by Tom and Jessica. Uh, Jessica's the curriculum coordinator and many of the marquee events happened on this at the middle school. So way back in April, this group of folks was gathered and had conversation about human growth and development. It wasn't an arbitrary gathering of folks. It's by mandate that we get a committee together and you have to have a cross-section. You'll see the state statute in a moment that tells you who you have to have in the room. Some of the folks on the screen, um, are in the room. Shara was there. Tom was part of the meeting and so was Jessica. So the advisory committee, those are the folks. They last met on April twentieth. The Department of Public Construction says that you need to have guidelines for human growth and development. You need to work with an advisory committee to help execute that plan. So at that meeting, each of those, um, each of the groups where human growth and development occurred make a presentation. So in essence, by building. The first building that presents is intermediate school because the first thing that happens is fifth grade. So nothing happens in the elementary in regards to human growth and development, so they didn't present. The state statutes that are applicable here are the state statutes that you see on the screen. The first of which is one fifteen thirty-five. And what that, uh, statute says is you have to establish guidelines to help school districts develop comprehensive health education programs. Uh, prohibits school boards, uh, to use a specific human growth and development cur- uh, curriculum. You can choose your own in essence. Uh, states that the program is voluntary, so parents, uh, don't have to have their children participate if they don't want to. One eighteen oh one states that each school board shall provide an instructional program designed to give people's knowledge of the human body and the means to maintain lifelong health. States that parents may opt their children out of this information. Extension of one eighteen oh one, two D eight, requires school district to provide students in elementary school. In the case of Amory, elementary school is intermediate school. It's fifth grade. Knowledge of effective means by which pupils may recognize, avoid, prevent, and halt physically or psychologically intrusive or abusive situations which may be harmful to pupils, including child abuse, sexual abuse, and child enticement. One eighteen oh one nine encourages school districts to provide a developmentally appropriate human growth and development curriculum in kindergarten through grade twelve to provide optimal health and well-being of the pupils. And then the seven instructional topics, abstinence, sexually transmitted disease, all in the same line. Medically accurate information about HPV, HIV, and AIDS, pregnancy, premen- prenatal development, childbirth, prenatal responsibility in marriage, abstinence, criminal penalty, and then sex offender registration. One eighteen zero one nine, again, asks, the state statute provides annual basis to provide parents of each pupil enrolled in the school district with outline of the human growth and development curriculum. Tom's gonna touch on that when we get into the middle school portion. Uh, parents may opt their children out. And lastly, the curriculum or the, uh, the committee, the advisory committee needs to be made up of a cross-section of the folks that are listed there. I've read enough slides. I sort of feel weird reading them to you anyway, but there's a lot of folks they want you to have in the room. There is an opt-out policy, uh, as part of one eighteen, uh, oh one nine. A parent can opt their kid out. Simply needs to make the request to do so. And then the health curriculum. Health, we teach here as a required class for all freshmen. Controlled substances, mental health, sexually transmitted disease, and human growth and development all need to be a part of that. Now, before we get to elementary, are there any questions that you might have for me about the committee or about the state statutes that sort of undergird what our responsibilities are? Sort of a natural breakpoint in the presentation.
Did we have to stop and, I thought we were gonna talk about opting in, but then after, when I read Wisconsin State statute, it looked like you had to opt out.
Tom's gonna talk about them when we get to the eighth grade presentation, because it is technically an opt-in where you have to literally sign in order to have your child to be a part of it. I was under the impression that it was an opt-out and Aaron reminded me that it's, you must have an eighth grader, that it's actually an opt-in. You have to physically sign, have them in. So maybe you wanna speak to that now, Tom?
Sure.
I really spoke to that last month as well, that it was an opt-in, a parental permission form, because those went home.
There are, there are, there are shorter units in family consumer ed that are taught in seventh and eighth grade, which we'll cover. Those are opt-out and we send a letter home, um, to the parents just saying this is, and mail it, this is the date, approximate date that these will happen. And you can opt out if you choose. But based on the nature of human growth and development, the kids kinda call it doctor day because we bring in the, um, medical providers. On that, because of the nature of going into, um, some of the protection, you know, some of the sexually, how to prevent pregnancies and things. We, uh, the committee back twenty years ago, when we first were meeting, suggested opting in on that specific topic. And so we have consistently for, since we started it, having an, that, that, for that one, you have to opt in. Um, and this year, I had all but four opt-in. I did hear from every parent. And, uh, four opted out. And four, and the others opted in.
Okay, so elementary school, uh, we teach health from four K through twelve, but human growth and development doesn't start till fifth grade. So Paula's off the hook. Let's go to the intermediate school. Intermediate school, you're up.
So we have two different focus areas. So the first is, as Sean had stated earlier, um, protective behaviors presentation. So we actually use a curriculum. It's called Second Step Curriculum. Um, it's taught in three lessons. It is taught by a classroom and it's taught by Mr. Mylan Archeck, our school counselor. Um, it's every other week based on the pacing of when our students receive, uh, counseling services with Mr. M. Um, the second component here at the intermediate school is fifth grade human growth and development presentation. So, um, like Sean had said earlier, when we met in April, it was a large focus. We did break it up by schools. So the first that we focused on was the intermediate school. So here in fifth grade, it's an introduction to puberty. It's, it's separated by genders. Um, they are taught by our school nurse. Um, and the teachers, the classroom teachers, and then the boys are taught by our fifth grade male teachers as well as our school counselor. And then the emphasis areas of that are a good hygiene, the body changes, so that's, um, acne, perspiration. Um, and then it also talks about healthy choices and then healthy relationships. Healthy relationships just meaning in terms of having good social skills and, you know, how do we treat other people and what does bullying look like? And how do we take care of ourselves and take care of others? So those are our two focus, um, areas here at the intermediate school.
And the fifth grade, um, Jessica, they get like little care packages sent home, right? Like a toothbrush and deodorant and things like that, right? To, for just good oral, overall hygiene, right?
Yes. Um, yes, there's, uh, yep, as Shara said, there's deodorant, there's tooth, uh, toothbrush, toothpaste. Um, and then for the girls, there is, um, yeah, some feminine hygiene products that are, are just an introduction to.
And then, um, the three lessons that are taught from the Second Step Curriculum, um, what grade level does that start at?
Um, it just in fifth grade is the protective behaviors presentation.
Okay, that's right. Just the, yeah, no, no earlier than fifth grade, right?
Correct, on the child protection. Um, and as Mr. Benson was saying earlier, these are, um, these are opt-outs. So there are letters that come home from me, um, on, on both of them. They're both taught at, at different times throughout the year. The protective behaviors presentation is done in the, more in the spring of the fifth grade. Um, and then the human growth and development was done this fall.
And you mailed those letters, correct?
Have you given the opportunity for parents to see this protective behaviors program?
We, in, in my letter, um, I do say that I'm, I'm happy to have further conversation with you. You can, um, go to the Second Step Curriculum website. I'd be happy to have someone in if they'd like to sit down and have the, have the conversation or see it. I'd be happy to do that as well. The human growth and development presentation, we actually use the Always Changing Program. We do send home a link, um, to their website because all their resources are online. It's a, it's a free program that's research-based. And so we do send home the link, um, because there's actually some home links, uh, that parents could access. We, of course, really want to encourage parents to be having these conversations at home. We recognize that it doesn't happen at home for every student. But we hope that we have a working relationship where we're supporting each other in tandem and supporting their child.
And those links are included in the letter, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Um, I have a couple of questions. So, um, with the protective behaviors, it seems like, from what I recall with my own students, my own children, um, that some things are taught before fifth grade as far as, um, healthy touch and, and, you know, if you're concerned about, you know, some of those kinds of things. So I guess I'm wondering, like, when does that start? Is that, you know, even in elementary, the elementary school or, yeah?
So the, uh, protective behaviors presentation is one component of Second Step. It's just taught in, just taught in fifth grade. But Second Step, Paul on my right, happens all the way down in, is it kindergarten or first grade?
Yeah, right away in the second, kindergarten.
Kindergarten. Uh, really developmentally appropriate, I can tell you from, from using it at the elementary school. It's a lot on taking turns and body awareness and, you know, sitting still and, you know, sharing and kindness and what are kind words? There's, there's puppets involved. Um, there are songs that are involved. And so it really just scaffolds, uh, really to this presentation in fifth grade. But absolutely, it's, it's taught all the way through just on, you know, those essential social skills.
And then is there anything that is touched on with dating? Because I mean, I know, I'm hoping my children aren't dating in fifth grade, but they're talking about it for sure. And then you get to middle school and it explodes, you know, so it's kind of, I'm just wondering if that is discussed at all as far as healthy relationships in terms of dating, having a boyfriend, girlfriend.
Family letter that goes home from Second Step. I, I have a cover letter that goes with it. And then there's actually a letter from Second Step that goes through it. So as, as Joe was asking, what can parents access? So you can go to the Second Step Curriculum online. Um, there's actually an activation code, so you can go in and you can sample the materials. Um, we, we do provide that. Again, I'm, I'm happy to talk with any parent over the phone or that would like to come in and walk through these items with me or Mr. M. We'd be happy to do that. Um, but the three types of skills that are focused on through the protective behaviors are personal safety, touching safety, and then assertiveness. So that's asking for a help, um, if you're in an uncomfortable situation, seeking out safe adults. So those are the, those are the three topics that are focused on.
I think we did talk about some of that, the good touch, bad touch in our curriculum meeting. And of course, that we also brought up that, um, that, you know, the, the focus of good touch, bad touch, when they're little and things like that is not only necessarily just adults in their life, but other kids that may be around them or things like that, that they need to be aware that, um, you know, if it makes you feel weird or uncomfortable, that you should seek out an adult and talk about it. So, um, I think it's pretty basic of those kind of things of, it, it's not like a, there isn't any mention of like sexual touches or anything like that, but like, you know, as far as even just violence and things like that, so. Yeah, I just, you know, I just even wonder as it seems like more and more children are getting, are especially girls, but are hitting puberty earlier. And so I even just wonder if fifth grade is getting late, um, to be discussing some of those things because.
I appreciate bringing it up. When you look back at our committee, you know, one of our, um, commitments is that no more than one-fifth of that committee can be from one category. So we had healthcare providers. Um, and really based on the recommendation of the healthcare providers, they recommended that we should be teaching puberty at least in fourth grade, if not moving it up to third grade. Uh, as a medical community, they are seeing girls that are going through puberty earlier and earlier. It's not uncommon to have a girl get her first menstrual, menstrual cycle, um, in third grade or at the age of eight. So it was recommended to us, we as a collective committee, uh, just felt like, you know, we were here presenting. We weren't, you know, we weren't gonna make any, uh, additional changes to it, but it was recommended to us to look at the age of, I think, of development.
And, and it, some of that discussion was at that committee, um, meeting when that was talked about is that, yes, especially girls are going through those changes earlier and earlier. And it's not uncommon for girls to start to have their menstrual cycle in the intermediate school. And we talked about a plan and that, that we're working out a plan of action of how that looks. Um, but girls that are third grade and fourth grade are still outside of the typical norm. And so we decided to go with the, what is the general norm, even though you're gonna have exceptions to those rules, so.
We did. We talked a lot about fostering and cultivating relationships with, with females, having things available. Um, how, how would we react? Obviously communicating with parents. Um, again, our, our, our hope is that these conversations are happening at home. Is that if a student has their first cycle here at school, is that there's been some front-loading of knowledge, so, so they know what to expect. But we're also in a space where we recognize that that's not happening at home. So whether that's me stepping in or office ladies stepping in, but being able to navigate and facilitate those conversations and having the products available to support students. We'd love to think that every student at home has a support system that's having those conversations. But, um, it's come across, you know, our office many times that, that's not happening.
Tom?
Okay. And, you know, before I kinda hit on the, um, human growth development piece, I think it's important too to understand that there's quite a bit of education that happens in health that doesn't necessarily tie just to human growth development. Whether you're talking about, um, healthy eating, how to cook nutritious meals, how to avoid, um, alcohol and drugs. And all of those types of things are also covered. We're just kinda covering, um, the human growth development and what kind of stemmed from that committee, the instruction is based just on that topic. At the seventh grade, our human growth development unit is primarily tied to a two-day unit. And it's taught through family consumer education. And, uh, again, it kinda refers further into the puberty and the changes that their, their bodies are going through at that point. And, and, um, talking about the influence of the media. And what that means is, um, oftentimes, kids get mixed messages that, um, if they aren't doing this, they're not normal. Or if they're not, um, dating, you know, someone that, oh, you should all be dating and you see, or even just down to, you should, you need to look like this because that's what, um, you know, sometimes some unrealistic expectations of what you look like or what you should do or. And then, and then that unit, they also cover like. And then that unit, they also cover like, you know, is it, because they say it's cool to smoke, it's not, you know? And then they talk a lot about the influence that the media sometimes has on unrealistic expectations for kids. And then we talk about, further about the physical changes that happens. And then the psychological changes, basically meaning as kids start to feel things and they start exploring relationships or thinking about relationships. And their bodies are going through a lot of hormonal changes emotionally too. Sometimes they, we have kids that, to be honest with you, they hit middle school and all of a sudden they change and they start crying all the time and they don't know why. And that's because their bodies going through such massive hormonal changes. And so we just talk a little bit about what's going on in their body there. And then there is a further discussion a little bit on the human reproductive system. And they talk some, about some of that. In eighth grade, it's a two-day unit as well. And in there, they start hitting further onto teen pregnancy. Yeah, there is a discussion of abstinence, but they also talk about prevention. And part of the reason that, you know, you hear abstinence, and I know you can, had been up earlier and talked about it, was that they, the, kind of the statutes are basically saying, if you do teach this, you have to make sure that kids understand that abstinence is the only 100, you know, percent pure way that you're not going to become pregnant or have a sexually transmitted disease. So that is stated. But they do talk on teen pregnancy and again, changes to your body, how to prevent pregnancy and STDs. And basically there, a lot of the discussion is, you know, these are really, really heavy decisions. And it can have lifelong impact to you as far as being a parent at a really young age. So they cover a lot of that. Again, there are letters that are sent home at the beginning of each term. These are six-week long classes. We have to send the letter at the beginning of each six-week term. And we put this right towards the end of the unit. And so the parents had, would have like four to five weeks to respond to the letter that came out. And we have had a few parents each year that maybe would come in and meet with Kathy Vincent at the time. I have not had anyone that I'm aware of that's asked to come in this year to see Haley DeLeon, our new teacher. But Kathy Vincent has met with some of the parents and kind of went over the curriculum in the family consumer ed for seventh and eighth grade. And then I would say probably 20 years ago, because there was an increase in teen pregnancies at the high school, there was a big concern in the community that they wanted to bring the discussion of further really into the, with the doctors on, on preventing pregnancy in a much more straightforward way down to the eighth grade. And so there was a large community group that kind of was, you know, asking for that. And that was brought to the committee and they decided that we would start, I would say this was probably 90, or maybe 2001, two, or 2002, an eighth grade doctor day presentation. And again, the abstinence is the emphasis that that's the only way to, you know? And we again, talk about, these are really, really big issues. And you need to make sure that, that you take, you know, that you understand where the whole situation, the psychological situation as well. But the doctors do cover pregnancy prevention, sexually transmitted diseases. They talk a lot about some of the most common sexually transmitted diseases that they're seeing. And again, they continue to talk about the body changes that they're going through. But again, that, it's a probably about an hour-long presentation, hour and 10 minutes. And primarily on how to prevent pregnancy and how to prevent sexually transmitted diseases with the kids. Then the final slide is, and again, that was the one presentation that is an opt-in instead of opt-out. As far as the middle school curriculum then, again, the basis is to identify the components of, of health and disease prevention, analyze the benefits of and the barriers of practicing healthy behaviors. Some of the impacts of media on ourselves. And again, that kind of talks about, are people glamorizing drinking or smoking? And you know, and oftentimes we'd even talk with kids with movies, you're seeing movies where kids are, people are doing drugs and there's no ramifications from, and the consequences down the road. And that that's not really how it works in real life. We talked about how do I, to identify criteria for choosing the best source of health information, how to examine communication strategies and relationships. We talk a lot about, in the doctor presentation too, there's a big, big portion of, you know, what does, what does consent mean? And how, you know, that, that there's, you need to make sure that you're in a healthy situation and no one's feeling pressured. And then coaxing and all of that is kind of discussed too as far as healthy relationships. Identifying situations where ineffective decision-making skills are implemented. Assess and impact the decision-making process, setting realistic health goals. And then they talk too about, you know, talking about how do you take personal responsibility for yourself and your personal health behaviors? And, and you know, now there's, you know, you're starting to get young adults and you're going to start making college and career plans and where you want to go. If you set some goals for that and make sure that you're fulfilling that your whole life, where do you want to go and what, how do you want to proceed with your life? And what are the important things for you? So.
I think, Tom, I just kind of wanted to follow up to the, when we talked about examining the communication strategies and the relationships and that was something that we brought up at the, at the meeting, was that this was, and we talk about consent, that it wasn't, we actually revamped the letter because it was outdated. And it, you know, it talked more about females having consent. But then with, we see that there are situations where this can go either way. And then all of the other types of relationships now that are there. We talk about violence in those relationships depending, no matter what kind of relationship you're in. If it, if it's a, you know, heterosexual or, or other kind of relationship. And it can be female to male and male to female as well. So we just wanted to make sure that we were inclusive in that policy and that we were not singling out males to make them feel like they were necessarily an aggressor. So that was a, it was an update that we did. And I think it was worth noting that that was a good conversation that was had.
And so when we sit down with the, with the committee, or maybe I want to wait till you're done. I can hear it when you're done because I know you want to talk about the high school. But if there's other questions about the middle school, I can answer them.
So is there nothing in sixth grade face that's discussed?
No, no, sixth grade face is really tied into some units on, on healthy eating. And they, they love making pillows and sewing projects. And it's a little bit of a different influence. We certainly are at times talking about making good decisions and responsibility, but not necessarily on anything directly tied to human growth and development.
Has everyone here actually viewed the eighth grade health and human development that Dr. Gerffler sent?
That the doctors sent, that I sent to all four, five of you?
Did everyone take the time to view it?
I did not.
The slideshow?
The actual presentation, correct?
Well, obviously we don't exactly know what they're all saying, but we can look at the slide.
Let's look at the slideshow then, that's what I, that's what I mean.
The slideshow, yeah.
Yeah, is that the first time you've seen it?
The slideshow?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, um, how many years have you been on the curriculum?
Well, on the human growth and development? Two.
Okay. I think it would be really important to actually see not just a broad view of what the children are learning, but to actually see the presentation itself. Because, I mean, again, if we look at Wisconsin State statute, 118019 parent three, "The school board shall make the complete human growth and development curriculum and all instructional materials available for inspection by a parent or a guardian upon his or her request at any time, including prior to the use in the classroom." Has that ever been made available to see?
Not in my time, it's never been asked for.
You, what, has what been made available?
Has the act, again?
I think.
The instructional materials been made available?
Yeah, I had, we had a parent that met with Kathy Vincent about the eighth grade family consumer ed class and came in to look at the materials. The doctor day presentation, oftentimes it's not necessarily materials that I had always had because they were coming in, coming in and doing the presentation. I did have a request for someone to take a look at that last, I think it was last year, but it was several months after the presentation was over. And I didn't have access to anything because I didn't ask for it. So this year I said, I want to make sure, I said, have sat in and watched what they're doing. But I asked for the actual copy of it this time so that I could provide it to you. That's the only time I've ever had anyone ever come in, a parent, and ask for it, to see it, but.
Well, I think that parent has the same last name as me.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Different households.
Yeah, the thing is that I think what basically is like with the, with the doctors, like their singles, their handouts or something, I said, I don't have anything right now. They were, they came in, they had a presentation. I don't have anything, but I made sure then, the presentation hasn't changed. I said, I want to have it so that I can have access to it. And then I had, well, the board had requested to see it, so I sent that out. But I didn't have anyone else come in and ask. And, and, yeah, in 2022, that's the first time I've had someone ask that.
I think this is a huge area we can definitely get better in. And whether or not we have to put the curriculum online for parents to see. Or again, I, I went over the curriculum and, and again, I don't know if you can necessarily do that because, I don't know. I don't know how you can do it.
How you do what?
But at least the one I've seen in regards to eighth grade was, was pretty, I didn't necessarily get the first term of abstinence in which, again, I hope you understand ma'am, under, under 118019, if the school opts in to actually teach this, we have to meet a whole bunch of standards. And that's, and they state them under, under that Wisconsin State statute. And I just, I just want people to know, why are parents having to call in and say, hey, what are my kids going to learn? I would love to have the opportunity to communicate what's going to occur in the curriculum for next year's eighth grade. I'll have a child in that, in eighth grade. And I would love to, to talk to them about it beforehand as a parent. And I just, again, I don't want, just want to see a broad curriculum. I actually want to see what my kids are going to be.
If that's what you want, you certainly would be able to do that. I think it would be a strange method by which to do it, to send both of those presentations to all parents, just sort of cold calling them in that way? That, that might take some people aback.
And everything that, everything else up until that presentation, parents could, could come in and see and take a look at every single thing. The doctor day presentation, you know, we certainly sent that out months ahead of time about what we're doing and what the premise of it and the, the concept of it is. Understand that like when we asked the doctors to come in and I had a hard, I had, I was trying to get the presentation from one of them and got it like the week of. And that, I, because I, you know, I said, well, I think at this point now, I had seen it and it hasn't changed. But I said, I want to make sure that I have it on hand in case someone does come in and ask. Because that had happened before and I didn't have it. And then like two months later, I didn't have anything to show. I said, well, they came in, they do our presentations, I don't have a handout. But now that I do, I can say, well, this is what they showed last year in case I don't get it. And if you want to take a look at it, you certainly can.
In conversation with, with WASB, because I asked the very question you're asking, what does make available mean? Because that's a pretty broad phrase. And what they shared with me was, you have to have it available if anyone asks for it. I asked, do we need to send that out, the presentations out to everybody in advance? And they said, no, that is not what you need to do. But if somebody asks for it, you need to make it available. Somebody asks for it, I can certainly have it. I have both of them sitting on my desktop.
Yeah, I don't want to have a word of, you know, play of words here. I want our parents to be able to access.
I don't want to play on words either.
All instructional materials in regards to this, so they know what their kids are getting involved in.
For me, it's not a play of words. For me, it's simply doing what we're obligated to do under the eyes of the law. So that's why I asked.
Yeah.
We've been doing this for a long time. I've had kids go through the district, all four of my kids have went through all of this curriculum. Your kids have probably went through it, your kids are the same age as mine. Your kids are close to the same age as mine, we've been doing this a long time. I got the letter that came home. It's very similar to the letter that we, that we send out. It gives broad overviews of those topics. And then I think whatever parent covers in their house with those kids is up to those parents. I don't, so like, are you asking, like, you want to pre-teach what they're doing? And then have them like go through the presentation or, because I think that's like a lot of.
I want to have the ability to, ma'am. I want to have the ability to, ma'am. And, and again, looking at Wisconsin State law, what I just read to you, I want all materials available for parents. And again, last month when I asked this question to Mr. Benson, and I know I kind of got yelled at for going directly to him, I apologize. And the, the thing was, is I wasn't asking for myself. I was asking from a taxpayer and another parent, again, as someone who elected me to be here. And that's what I was asking for. Now, I don't think that they felt they got everything last year. And maybe, you know, just to be honest, I just, I don't think you had it. And, but now we do. Because, because the doctor sent it to all of us.
Yeah.
Well, it was sent to, to Tom, Tom sent it to me.
Yeah, so I, like I, so when I asked, I, after I'd had that question last year, it was months later, I said, I don't have anything for you. And again, to truly understand that, like what's in that presentation isn't, it's, they talk about what I asked them to talk about and they cover all of the components. And you know, I don't know if there's slides in there, but they're in there for about 70 minutes. So there's quite a bit discussed. But I don't always have it because it's a guest speaker that's coming in and the presentation that they're working from. But I said, no, I want you to send it to me in advance so that I can send it. And, and it took me up to a month from one of them to get it in. And that's because I was working, but I did have one from Dr. Williamson, I got Dr. Combs's. And it wasn't a syrup fault, she was sending it to me from home and got into my spam, I couldn't get it. It wasn't working correctly. And I said, no, I need another one. And it took us a while to get it, but we did. So at this point then, if someone were to ask, I want to come in and preview it. I can say, I will ask for it each year and say, this is what I have. And if I'm, if it's late, I can say, I can show you what it was last year. And it, they haven't really changed, but I can say, this is what it was last year. But, and truly then to understand that there are, sometimes kids are asking questions. Because we tell the kids that if you have a question, and you can ask it, but if you're comfortable, you can submit the question in writing. And then the doctor looks at them and we kind of take out a couple that we think the kids are just trying to make the doctor embarrassed or, you know, ask a silly question that they already know the answer to. But then the doctor will answer some questions. So the presentation may be slightly different depending on the hour that the kid sees it because they do it three times. And again, the Dr. Combs is meeting with the girls and Garrick is meeting with the boys. I always have a staff member in there as well, a male staff member with, with the guys and the female with the girls. And so that they're able to answer questions or assist as they needed it. But the presentation is slightly different based on the questions that are asked and.
So we have both versions of the presentation, the boys' version and the girls' version. We'll be doing eighth grade again next year and we're not skipping it. So next year, when we get to this time of year, four to six weeks prior to that presentation, Tom will send to the parents, this is what's happening, here's the day it's happening and here's the subjects that are going to be covered. And if folks want to see that information, they can come on in and we can show them every single slide. They can go through it on their own. And at that point, they can choose whether or not to have their child be a part of that. Now that we have the presentations, that is a very real possibility. The other manner by which to go is to make it publicly available in another way. That, that's up to you, if you guys want to direct us to do it different. But the way I just shared it is the way we're going to plan to do it in the future.
I think we'd have to talk to legal before that, just due to the pictures.
Oh, yeah, maybe.
Thank you for looking into this for me.
Well, and the pictures that they take are out of health textbooks. I mean, you're going to see those types of pictures in a lot of health classes in high school as well. You know, as far as taking a look at, typically I think what you're referencing to is like some of the sexually transmitted diseases that are on specific.
That's exactly what I'm referencing to.
Right, yeah. But again, they're showing parts to the guys and parts to the girls, it's not, you know, they're separated out as they're going.
So we'll continue to have this conversation. It's a good idea for everyone to understand the process and as to why we engage in the process. Because truthfully, being in compliance with State statute is not something that districts always choose to. But we are, and I'm happy that we are. Can we tweak our processes by all means? And we can do that again next year.
Can I ask you, no, Joe, you had mentioned something about the committee and the makeup of the committee?
Yeah, well, I, I was reviewing this Wisconsin State statute. I guess I didn't know that under the Wisconsin State statute, 118019 parent five, I believe it is, talked about who represents a committee. And I just like, I like the idea of having diversity in a committee because you're not stacking the cards. And it even states, I know at one point we were kind of arguing in the past here about who represents another committee, and I think it might have been for the library. And we said, oh, well, they're parents, well, teachers are parents. Well, and it says right in here, only a quarter can make up, you know? But no more than a quarter of the members of the committee may be made up of employees of the school district.
If you look at the.
Or their spouses. I just, I just thought that that was, I just thought that that was a great way to have a well-rounded, diverse view of, you know, everyone's different opinions. And I like that.
I'm not so sure there's a more diverse committee than this one.
I was going to, I think this goes from one end to the other.
I mean, politically, in walks of life, it's a very diverse committee.
And just has more facts.
I like, I like following the committee is what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, yeah.
We're gonna argue about the same thing here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm in agreement.
But I just, I wish we actually used it in other realms too.
Sure.
I guess what I'd like to say about that committee is, um, being in that room, on that very diverse committee, there wasn't any arguments that took place in that room of anything that we all agreed on. I mean, everybody was one hundred percent on the same page of how we, the changes that we made, what we saw in the curriculum. There wasn't anybody that said, I don't agree with this, I don't want this, or I think we should have it this way. Um, out of that very.
But you didn't ask the question, how do you better it?
Yeah.
We did, that's, we actually did some of those things, yeah.
And no one said, oh, we, we, we're perfect. I'm not, no one's like, thank you, but I disagree. So I want questions brought up. I want diverse aspects of life brought up. Um, am I happy we're all towards the same direction? Absolutely. But what are the challenges that we're gonna see coming up? Some of the things that were brought up earlier today from Mrs. Martinson. Um, again, are there other aspects and ways in which we can teach this better? Um, we're all, again, we're all arguing about the better safety of our children, right? We all love it, that's what we want. But I think we need to ask questions differently than if we're perfect.
I, I guess I didn't think I used that word. I think that all of the suggestions that were brought up, everybody was in agreeance with tho- those suggestions, like, hey, I hadn't thought of that. So, but yeah, that's a really great idea. I think we did do some additions that, yeah.
It was a really purposeful committee, that was really well-rounded, that we wanted to make sure everyone brought different lenses and different experiences to the table. And so there was, there was a lot of conversation and diving deeper into things and questions and just the roles that everyone plays in our community. It was a great opportunity for everyone to have a voice and for us to really reflect on what we all want, which is what's, you know, what's best for kids.
And towards the end of continued improvement, Joe, we actually had the conversation, not last administrative team, but the one before that, about, let's get that committee back in the room here in the early spring. Which is on the horizon. And at that point, we can continue to get better at doing this thing that we are obligated to do.
And above and beyond the timeframe that we're obligated to do.
Absolutely. The timeframe says you need to meet once every three years, we're not gonna do that, we'll meet every year.
Yeah, I mean, thank, I'm thanking you for doing this.
And I know, like, we brought in different people to say, okay, what are you teaching? Go over it. Um, necessarily didn't go through slideshows and everything, but really went into detail of this is the topic, this is what I talk about, this is how we talk about it. The second day, we do this, and then the doctor kinda went in. Um, the hardest one was health class at the high school, because you're talking about a significantly number of days there. But, um, I, I think as far as the committee understanding exactly what was gonna be said and talked about was covered.
I think Mr. Rose did a really, um, significant job of going in depth of what he teaches there at the high school.
Yep.
Any other feedback on human growth and development?
High school.
Oh, high school, sorry.
High school.
Go ahead, Josh.
Yep.
High school stuff, it's all pretty much just the, the state curriculum, the mandated topics that are covered. Parent calls in, we'll give them the syllabus, we'll give them any assignment, nothing to worry about, they can have it, I can get it for them in an hour.
Okay.
No motion, just information.
Just information, next we'll have our first reading for Board Policy one sixty-one.
The old version of the policy, you'll have to train your eyesight on the screen, is the crossed out black version. It's a policy adopted, uh, in January of nineteen ninety-five, so it's ancient. Um, the policy, I'm not really sure, is anything other than pretty nondescript, I'm not really sure what it means. It reads, no individual member, speaking board member, may transact business for the board in relation to the formulation of policies, regulations, or resolutions. In addition, no member may transact business for the board outside of a legal board meeting, except when empowered through board appointment to carry out a special task. There's some teeth to it, but it isn't entirely clear, so I called WASB and said, this isn't entirely clear. They agreed, and they sent you what you see in blue. So what you see in blue, I, I hate to read slides to you, but since this is entirely new, I sort of feel obligated to, so I'm going to read it to you. Board member authority in interactions with district staff and district operations. It reads requesting information, meaning a board member requesting information. When an individual board member requests data, reports, or other information from the district in his/her capacity as an elected district official, such request shall be submitted to and coordinated through the district administrator. The district administrator may determine an appropriate response to the request or refer the request to the board for further consideration. If a board member seeks to inspect or receive copies of district records in some other capacity, uh, as a parent of a student, a member of the general public, et cetera. The board member should clarify to the custodian of records, which is me in this case, uh, that his or her request is not being submitted in his or her capacity as an elected district official. I'm gonna stop there and we can have conversation, then we'll take the other two slices of this policy, um, and go through that. So, any feedback thus far?
Um, I do have one thing that I think needs to kinda be clarified there.
Okay.
Um, so we're talking about that, the, hmm, that those things need to be coordinated through the district administrator, those requests. Um, it doesn't take into account, except when there's such requests involve the district administrator themselves, which we know.
Yeah.
Has been.
Be a problem.
An issue in the past.
If I'm up to shenanigans and you are asking questions about what I'm up to, you probably don't ask me those questions.
And that, I mean, and not just you, I mean, this, this applies to any district administrator, whether this is gonna be an interim, if God forbid, something catastrophic happens to you. Or something you leave us for another school district, cause, you know, or we have to carry on, this policy is meant for future, so.
Sure.
Um, we, there, there's something that needs to be clarified there. Um, so if that circumstance then, uh, were to arise, I would like to see a meeting of the board as a whole should be called prior to request of such information.
Okay.
I'd like to see that added somewhere in there, if you can run that up the chain to legal and see where they fit that in.
Sounds good.
Where would you request information, like, where would be the proper chain of command, do you know what I'm saying? If, if we met as a board and we said, we need information, but we can't go to the district administrator, where, where would we go?
Well, I think that depends on what you're, like, investigating. So that's why I think the committee of a whole as a board then would decide what, what investigation or who needs to be talked to then. If it would be a principal, usually another person on the administrative team, that's usually then you're basically just usurping the district administrator and then following the chain of command down.
But you're saying we should do it together as a board?
Well, I think, yes, because then you don't have this, like, one board member going off the rails and just talking to another administrator without, um. Cause it happened, right? I mean, it, it's been there, right? So you had some person of the board decide to investigate, and so they went to an administrator, and then it caused all kinds of chaos. Not only distrust between the board member and the district administrator, but then distrust between the board members themselves. So if you have a special meeting to talk about that as a board first, I think then it clarifies what we're looking at.
So for example, last month, when I, when I sent an email to Tom Benson, uh, for another parent who's concerned about health and human growth development. And I asked Tom Benson, hey, can I simply get the materials? And I said something like that, very short. Um, everyone here was upset, and let me be clear, policy one sixty-one might as, will be called, how to silence board, board member Joe Viergant.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say this, that, that is not what I had in mind when I talked about this, although I've seen your reaction to that. And I'm sorry, Keith, but can I just be blunt here?
Go ahead.
So this happened back in two thousand seventeen, when Keith was investigating district administrator Kukta. And he went to another, um, administrative member, and it created all kinds of controversy and bad feelings, not only amongst the board here. But it also created some issues amongst the superintendent and then the board itself. We couldn't function as a unit, and that all happened before I was on the board, but then it caused a board member to resign. So back in two thousand seventeen, if you remember, he did resign. And that's then what caused all of the rest of it to happen then after. So that had nothing to do with you, my comment had everything to do with what we've already been through in the past, longer.
So, how does me, uh, okay, so then, let's just say I wanna ask the board, hey, I'd like to actually talk about youth and, uh, human growth and development. And none of you wanna talk about it?
I don't think it's saying.
But that's not saying that.
I don't think it's saying that you need to come to the board for what you want to, what, what you wanna ask about. It's saying if you want to ask about, ask about the district administrator, we need to do that as a board. That's the only thing that she's saying we need to do as a board. Otherwise, I think this policy is just saying, if you want information as a board member, you should go through the district administrator. If you want information as a parent, you can go straight to the principal or to the teacher.
Yeah, I think that's where I just keep having problems with being, I mean, so we need to wear different hats, and we talked about this in closed session last time. You know, when Shar was asking me if I was a board member, if I was a, a parent asking that. And I don't know if I'm that guy. I, I, I think I'm your everything, I think I'm your parent, I think I'm your board member, I think I'm a police officer, I think, um, I try to be a good steward.
You can be, but the capacity of your actions has to be different, because we are functioning as a board.
Are we?
Well, I don't know what you tell me.
Well, well, I'd, I'd like to think that a board is equal to a team, and with a team, we have to have definite trust. And, and I could ask a simple question of anyone trusts me, and I would say you probably would have a unique answer. Um, especially with our closed session last month, the fifty-two minutes of bombardment that I took from you guys. And on all levels. And, um, so are we a team? Are, you know, are we, again, are we gonna actually work as a unified front? Or are we gonna just attempt to, I think that's the question I have.
I think you could be a unified front and still have differences of opinion. And what I just said.
I agree to that.
What I just said had nothing to do with that, this action, this was a stipulation. Um, I don't, I feel like we've tried to come together, we can have differences of opinion, that's fine, we are a unified front, we're trying to do what's best for the kids. This policy is literally stating what we do as a board at our very basic level. And if there is a problem with the district administrator, we have to have a capacity as a board to deal with that, um, that's not involving him. And that was what my addendum was to that.
The first paragraph simply states that if any, any member of this board wants information, that if they ask me for that information, I will turn it around and provide it to you as fast as I can, as soon as I have it. And if you, if you want to make sure that you get the information, I can make sure that you do. It's, it gets a little difficult to have independent board members control the workflow of building administrators and other supervisors. Cause they are going to float board member request to the top of the list, my, my hunch is, cause you're a board member. Uh, that gets a little sticky. So, uh, as I have said to all of you, if you want something, you just let me know and I'll get it, not just to you, but all five of you. And then you can function as a unit.
And maybe that's something that, you know, that we do need to think more about, and I know you don't want to have to think, am I doing this as a board member, am I doing this as a parent? But, you know, maybe that's something that I need to do too, because I've gone in and talked to the principals, and maybe I should clarify, like, I'm coming in as a parent. You know, I mean, you know, I'm coming in as a parent, cause I, I wanna talk about, you know, standardized grading or something, versus I'm coming in as a board member. I guess, you know, maybe I should have specified that a little bit more. Um, but, you know, again, like, I think if, you know, if we want information as a board member, Sean, you know, this policy is saying we should go through Sean. Or if we're going in as, if we want information as a parent, you know, I think it's great to go right to the teacher or, you know, to whoever is in charge. Um, I don't think I need to ask Sean if I, you know, have a question about, you know, something that's being taught in middle school science, like, you know, go to the, I don't think I need to ask you as a parent, you know?
You're a parent.
I, I wanna go straight to the teacher and I wanna say, you know, hey, what are you, what are you doing in the science, you know, unit? That's completely fine, I don't need to involve him in that, if, you know, so. But maybe that's just something we need to all consider is how, how we're talking to people, specify, I'm coming in as a parent.
Yeah, I, I think I did when I was, had kids here, I don't have kids here anymore, I don't, Dale and Keith have been on the board far longer than me. You all had kids here when you were a board member, I think we've all had conversations with teachers as just parents. Um, but this is, just as says, as a board member, we're following the cha- chain of command down, which WASB, I believe, um, puts on in their training as new board members. And that it's important to follow a chain of command.
Absolutely. The second section, I think we're ready for that, states, directing work of district employees unless authorized by the board or unless reasonably required. In the performance of his or her legal or board authorized duties as a board officer, an individual board member should not attempt to direct the work of district employees. And I'll pause there, and if you have comments or questions, we can take them at this time. Okay? The third section reads, access to schools and district operations. If an individual board member wishes to visit and observe a district activity or operational area that is not generally open to the public audience, including visits to schools and classes during school hours. The board member may do so in a manner consistent with any other specific role that the board member has, parent of a student if applicable. Or by scheduling a visit as a board member in advance with the relevant building principal or with the district administrator. In the event that the administration or individual board member disagree as to the timing or purpose of the board member's request to schedule such a visit. The request may be referred to a board member for consideration by the board. Any questions or comments on that third section?
Just a, just a minute, please.
Um, I just wanna be clear, like, this, you're not limiting, like, access to the building or anything like that, it's just basically like stuff that.
Let us know you're coming, let us know you're here.
If you wanted to go in and observe a classroom, if you wanted to go in and observe the gym or whatever.
If you wanna come into the building, just simply coordinate that with the building principal.
Right, but that's as a board member, cause if you wanna come in as a parent.
Come in as a parent.
You come in as a parent.
Correct.
It all boils down to communication.
And I guess, I just wanted to point out, like, this, this policy is more of a, you know, kind of a following the chain of command down, I would like to say. But I think as a board, we work really, really hard to encourage still staff to be able to reach out to board members and things that, when it's appropriate. And when, you know, when there's issues or things that you have, or maybe good comments or comments.
I, I have never stood in the way of conversation that folks want to have with you. I have shared with you, I will, I will share at this time, I had two conversations with two different board members over the course of my thirteen-year career outside of a board meeting. That number has risen greatly with the staff that work here now, including the people sitting across from me. They can have conversation with you, I'm not gonna stand in the way of that, I never have, I never will.
No, I think that's been like some, a really great change that we were able to make back to our employee handbooks that was kinda taken away, that power was kinda taken away from.
But in regards to the nature of the gist of the first section here, I, I, I simply would like to be in the know in regards to, uh, requests that you have of whether it be these folks or other folks that work here. That's all I'm asking. And if I could direct that work, that is going to be the cleanest, the easiest, and the least sticky in the end. So this.
I, so, you actually just got this from WASB?
I got this prob- probably three weeks ago or so.
Okay. Um, I looked, well, I agree. I agree, to effectively lead your team, I think I definitely should have went through you. Um, instead of going to Tom and going to Josh and Greta. Um, but I just wanna bring up something too, that I've been speaking with Josh and Greta about this subject and this school. I've actually spoke to the school board before I was an elected official here about my concerns in the library. So, um, I want you guys to realize that. And, and again, when I, when I have people question me about not understanding why I'm speaking or why I'm writing an email in that manner, I've been telling you this for over a year. I hope you listen. You don't have to agree, but I would appreciate you listening. And, um, the other thing about this actual policy itself is Clear Lake has a different policy, but it's very similar. Um, there's other districts who have different looks of this policy, but they're all very similar. Um, so I looked at that beforehand, and, and I wanna just tell you, I apologize if I put you in any weird predicament. I definitely didn't intend to do so and didn't wanna bring up any animosity or anything like that.
They never expressed any concern to me, they weren't worried about it. They just, what should I do here? That's literally, that's the conversation, they got so many other things to worry about. Yep, I, maybe I'm speaking wrong, I don't think you were bothered.
No, I just, I didn't have anything, I'm like, I'm, I'm gonna try and get this, you know, and then I just told them I don't have it, and. And the, the only concern, the question I had was that it's not, it wasn't necessarily a. And the only concern, the question I had was that it's not, it wasn't necessarily a presentation that the school put together or like a curriculum we purchased or whatever. And sometimes when you bring in a guest speaker, you know, and I said, "I've seen it. I've seen it, but I don't have anything to give out." And that's when I decided I'm going to get over and get on it, and. I just want other people to know that it was better. We saw it, and we knew what they were talking about, but I hadn't given, never had anyone asked to see it before, and it wasn't necessarily mine. It was theirs. So I just wanted to make, can I, what do I do? Because I didn't have anything. So I quickly went to get it. I wasn't worried that you'd contacted me. I just want you to understand that, too. I was just like, I don't know. This is new, new for me. I don't know what to do, so.
And it's more my jurisdiction than Tom's, so we brokered it out. He got it. I got it. You guys got it. It'll be as fast as I can get it in my hands.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll see the little tweaks next month.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll move to our action items.
Yes.
First one is your WASB delegate.
WASB delegates. We have typically two delegates, but we're. Aaron is our delegate, and.
Does he have a delegate alternate?
Yes, a delegate alternate. I misspoke. They have the delegate assembly again here at the state convention coming up in January, but we do not have an alternate in that Chelsea was our alternate, and Chelsea isn't here. So we need an alternate.
I'm milking cows, man.
Doesn't mean you have to go to the convention. It means that we need an alternate.
Are you going to make it?
I'm planning on it.
What's the date?
It's January 18th.
Through the 20th.
Yeah, it's during the convention, so we usually leave on Tuesday and come back Friday. But again, I don't think that you have to go unless something happens to me.
No, you don't have to go.
And I don't know, even last year, they were still allowing for virtual, but I don't know if they're allowing that this year.
That I don't know.
Because that was interesting. I did it, you know, I did it when it was completely virtual in 2021, because the whole assembly and conference was virtual. And then last year, they provided, they allowed for virtuals to still participate. But I don't know. It does make it more complicated, because you have to wait extra time and allow.
Yeah, the virtual experience at the convention was not less than stellar.
Yeah, I mean, some of the, the in-depth school finance was, I don't know, I thought it was fine online. I folded some laundry during. But I was watching the slides and following along. No, but yeah. So I am planning to be there, and so I think it's just a matter of having an alternate, just in case.
I could be an alternate, but again, I would have to take off three days off.
No, we're not asking for you to do that.
Now, it's easier for me, so I'll be the alternate if you want.
Sounds good. I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
All right.
I'll lead a motion on that.
All right.
You will?
I'll motion.
For you or for Keith?
For Keith.
Of Keith to be the alternate. All right, I'll second for Keith to be the alternate.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Yeah.
All of us.
All right, that'll work. Next, we have the Wisconsin Credit Union Access.
We have our HSA for all staff at Wisconsin Credit Union Health Savings Account, and presently, the only person with access is Twyla, in that Andy has departed. So we need to have a resolution that I can bring to them in order to be able to give me access. We want access twofold, at least, on all financial accounts of that sort. All the verbiage here states that. They specifically made mention of the third point. They want to make sure that the resolution states that Andy has no further access and Jim Kuhta has no further access. It's simply that they want just the people that work here that should have access to have access.
Do we need to have more than two?
No, they said two is sufficient.
Okay.
And they need a resolution to make that real, and then I can go over there.
For Girl Scouts, we have to have three.
Well, this is not nearly as big as that.
This is bigger than Girl Scouts, and we have to have three, so.
Well, you must be handling lots of cash for a Girl Scout. I did not know that.
A move to accept the Wisconsin resolution as put forth.
All right, second, Aaron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Be o. All right, we are reviewing our COVID plan, which we'd have to do, or we.
We are obligated to revisit this every six months. The last time you viewed it was May, so that's what brings it here today, six months later.
Read every slide.
What was that?
Let's not read every slide.
We do not need to read every slide. I imagine this being a rather short presentation. If there's something that you have seen here that you want to change, then we can change it.
I mean, basically, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Basically, you just have our old, our old one and then our current COVID guidance, which is on the last page.
All that's there. The last page is the existing guidance, and that you'll see here. Becky will put it up in a moment. It's what you can read right on the website right now. Our, in essence, our guidance is this, "If you're sick, stay home. If you're not sick, come to school."
Do we have to have this matrix any longer?
No.
Well, we, I mean, we don't really have, we don't have.
Well, I'm not tracking the numbers, so no, you don't need to have it. I can tell you what the numbers.
Can I move to eliminate the matrix from our COVID plan? Because if we're, like, bound by this matrix and then all of a sudden something.
No, we're.
We're not bound by the matrix.
That's just our old.
I'm not going back to this matrix.
No.
That's our old, this is our old plan, so it's no longer in effect. Because we already threw it out. We threw out the whole plan. We even voted on that, I think, at one point, that we were no longer going to track and have the matrix and have this plan.
Well, I would have to look back at what you stated back in May, but.
Right, we accepted this plan, and if the matrix is in this plan.
No, but I'm pretty sure we threw out it. We like, we said we're not going to follow.
Well, you can't throw out the plan, because the plan is connected to S or dollars. You have to have a plan. How you were following it at this point in time, six months later, is going to look different for everybody, probably. We're in a whole different place now.
But I mean, yeah, because we're not, we're not following any of these things.
All we have to do is just review it and do nothing, right? So to me, it's like, we've reviewed it.
You don't have to make a motion. You can simply table it and revisit it again in six months. If you want to remove the matrix, you can certainly do that.
I guess my, because my question is, if it's a plan and you're, you're kind of supposed to follow your said plan, then if all of a sudden somebody then says, "But all of a sudden, the county has this case of COVID, and you're not following this matrix," and somebody gets deathly sick, can they come back and hold us liable? Because we didn't follow the matrix that's in our plan. We didn't follow our own plan.
You want to do away with the matrix? You can do away with the matrix.
You know, I mean, from that standpoint, it's, it's something that, you know, we all could get on the phone and do in 10 minutes if we had.
I'll second Shar.
Meaning?
Remove the matrix from the COVID plan.
There you go. Now you do your deal.
All right.
I'll second Shar.
There you go. Got it. Remove the matrix from our plan, our return to, safe return to school plan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No. There you go.
I'm sorry. If anybody says anything, I'd be shocked.
It's a little PTSD revisiting.
I know. I was just thinking, like, I don't want to be held bound to this thing.
Spend a lot of time here.
All right, next, school calendar waiver.
School calendar waiver. In order to have a waiver to start school prior to September 1st, you have to have a reason articulated as to why. The reason as to why is in the resolution. We have a rather large construction project beginning here in less than six months. It will consume all of the summer of '23, and it will consume '24. What we're seeking to do with this waiver is to give us as many days as possible in the summer of '24 to have no kids and no staff, particularly for sure in the elementary and definitely the high school, because we're doing all of the math and science and the commons work in the summer of '24, and we simply cannot do that work with kids and staff there. So the waiver calls for us to start on August 28th. And again, you have to ask the state to do that, because you're by law not before September 1st. And that has us finished on Friday, May 24th, or Friday before Memorial Day. It gets almost two weeks more construction for Cross Anderson, and they would be very pleased if they could have that. Now, if you don't want to pass a resolution, then the issue simply concludes here. I can answer questions about the school calendar if you want, because that's connected to this. You don't typically see that until January, but we've already crafted a draft of that. I can answer those questions if that would help you know how to weigh in on the resolution. So I'll turn it over to you if you have questions or comments.
Well, I think it just seems to make sense with the scope of the project going on and the timeframe of it. We start a couple days earlier, get out hopefully a few days or a week sooner.
We still have two days built in for weather events, about two and a half days. If we got to that point, we would start adding some minutes to get a third day, so we don't lose all of that. It simply changes the total number down about three total days, the exchange.
So we're going to have less days off during the, during the school year?
Nope, we have, we simply start earlier to finish earlier. The rest of the school year, the in-between, looks very similar as to what it always. Some things had to move up, because you're starting earlier. But no, we don't have to add days in the middle. No.
I'll make a motion that we pass the, or the resolution or the waiver.
Most made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. There we go. Next, donations to the district.
Okay. Donations to the district. Thank you for the donation of $500 to the High School Mental Health Collaborative in memory of former Amory teacher Katie Nelson, and that is from Chris and Michelle Bullmeister. New Richmond Farm and Home, thank you for donating your cotton candy to ma, cotton candy maker to the district. And that's it for donations. You'll need to make a motion to accept those.
So remember now, you all can access this cotton candy machine. We should get our boosters and our carnival.
Are you suggesting we do cotton candy at the next board meeting? Because that might, that might be strange.
I'm kind of an expert, since I make it for the Halloween carnival every year. I called them and said, you know, "We want to rent your cotton candy machine." And he said, "You're the only one who ever calls and runs this once a year, and I don't want it here anymore. How about we give it to you?"
Persistence, please.
Okay, great.
Perfect. And I think Aaron would like to make the motion.
Yes, I will make a motion with many thanks for the donation to the Mental Health Collaborative in memory of Katie Nelson, as well as for the cotton candy machine. Richmond Farm and Home.
Second?
Dale.
Dale, I am here.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Good. I wish you gave them a round of applause.
Pretty cool.
And personnel actions.
Personnel, we have new employee and extracurricular contracts for McKenzie Anderson as Clubhouse Lead Teacher, Christine, Chris McNamara, Director of Finance, Alan Schmidt as Custodian, resignations of Clint Wallen in the area of IT and Auditorium Director, contract addendums for Becky Schmidt, Stacy Sigsworth, and Twyla Sickink, who filled in the gaps and are continuing to fill in the gaps between Andy's departure and Chris's hire. So those are items that you would need to make a motion to approve if you see fit in doing so.
What if we don't approve Clint's?
We talk about that every year when people try to retire, though, too.
Why don't you give them a call?
I do have his number.
You see how he feels about that.
All right, a motion to accept the personnel action.
So moved.
Yeah, Shar, and the second?
Regretfully, second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? No. All right. And I think we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. And who's second?
Joe.
Joe. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Thank you very much for coming.